Vice Mayor Leva.
She's muted.
Here.
Mayor Snyder?
Present.
Okay, all council members are present.
It isn't on the agenda, but if everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Fung, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Sorry to spring this on you.
Oh, Mayor, Madam Mayor, you can go ahead, please.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we are having a special council meeting tonight to give the mayor advice on how to vote on a special selection committee under the Council of Cities tomorrow at 2 o'clock. Staff, you were gonna, a brief overview of the staff report?
Yes, Mayor Schneider, members of the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager. Just, just real quick. As you can see from the staff report, that at the City Selection Committee meeting of January 29th, a vote was taken to select a representative from the Northern Cities area, which includes Brisbane, Colma, Daly City, Pacifica, San Bruno, and South San Francisco for the Open SAM Trans Board of Directors position. That vote was taken, but we received notice from the Council of Cities that there was a discrepancy in the vote. And tomorrow at 2:00 PM, there will be a revote of those candidates. And so the purpose of this meeting, we were requested by another council member here based on the city adopted protocols, which are attached to the staff report, to have this on the agenda, to get direction of a majority of the City Council to direct the mayor on who to levy a vote for. And, and so that is what this item is in a nutshell. And again, I'm sorry for the special meeting, but we just received notice from the Council of Cities the end of last week that there was a discrepancy in the vote and a revote was required.
Thank you, City Manager. Okay, where to begin? I have been contacted by a couple of people. They're not exactly sure how tomorrow's 2 o'clock vote will go or, or how the vote will go. And that the Council of Cities Selection Committee will look at ways of improving it, but I can tell you what happened on January 29th that, and I see a hand raised. Okay, there's something new happening on my screen here. On the 29th, there was a vote taken using the chat function. The mayor from Colma was not able to use the chat function and then tried to call in her vote using a cellphone, and that also did not work. So that's one of the unusual aspects of the vote taken on the 29th. And then apparently, Mayor thought he typed in someone's name and may have typed in somebody else's name. So that's what got us to where we are tonight. And I have heard that there is a possibility that even the discussion of process will be part of the meeting tomorrow night. And I don't know if anyone on this council wants to provide me with how they might like to see that handled, if there is a question of how should this be recounted? That I'm, I'm happy to listen to comments from council.
Is that on our agenda tonight?
Well, it's, it's, it's not, to be honest, is that Annie?
Yes.
Sorry, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Mayor, not exactly, but when I talked to Tom about how to handle the meeting and with the flurry of phone calls that happened over the weekend, I just want to make sure that you all feel comfortable, that you've given me the direction that you would like me to pursue.
But we haven't given that yet.
Mayor, Mayor, if I could step in here real quick, I, I think that the question is, based on our conversation, is tomorrow, first and foremost, there may be a motion on whether to even have a revote. And, and so this is new information that in talking to the mayor just before this meeting, she had brought up. So I suggested that, given that this is new information, and yes, I think it is, it is on the agenda for discussion. Is there any direction from the City Council on a yea or nay at the meeting tomorrow to open it up for a revote or not? And then the second item would be then, who would that candidate be?
Can we go back to the gallery instead of looking at the report? Thank you.
So, looking for hands raised, go ahead, Councilwoman Pappan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I mean, if there was a discrepancy in the vote, I think absolutely we need to call for a revote. It appears that there was, so that needs to be resolved. It was a very close vote, from what I understood to begin with, so absolutely.
Well, for one second here, the discrepancy is what? That somebody thought this and voted wrong?
From what I understand, somebody voted for one candidate and it was counted for another candidate. That's what I heard, so there was a miscount.
Through the, through the chair.
Please go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Exactly what you, I'm sorry, I'm on my phone, so excuse me, I can't raise my hand.
It's okay.
I'm not trying to interrupt, but that's not really what was described. It really wasn't described that way from you or from what I read. It was just somebody made a mistake. They couldn't get on, the technical difficulties, whatever the case. But it wasn't, it wasn't a discrepancy, is that correct?
That was my understanding, having been there and having, this is the third selection committee meeting since I've become mayor. It's been handled exactly the same way. You, you type in to the chat exactly what you're, who you're voting for. So it's pretty hard to type one person's name at the point and not see when you hit Enter, who you are voting for. There was the problem with the, the mayor from Colma, but it was an 11, 11-8 vote at that point.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Pappan?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I understood from what, again, I mean, Council of Cities should be giving us the details on that, so we are all just going off of what we heard. But I had heard that the mayor of Half Moon Bay intended his vote to be for one candidate and it was counted towards another. How that happened, I do not know. I had also heard that the mayor of Colma was not able to get in and cast her vote, which would have been, you know, I think led to a tie vote or something like that. Again, Council of Cities, we are just speculating here, but they should have given us that report. For them to call for another vote, I think is extremely important here. If there was a discrepancy, which that is being inferred here, then absolutely there needs to be another vote.
And Mayor, if I may, also, we did attach the agenda and information for tomorrow's meeting in the staff report, just for additional information. It doesn't say, it didn't say anything, but just FYI.
Council of Cities, during the process, during the meeting, there was at least a five-minute period trying to help the mayor from Colma process her vote. And it was not just by chat, it was also by cellphone. And, and they, multiple, multiple attempts to count that vote.
Well, as I understand it, the mayor of Half Moon Bay's vote was miscounted. So that would have brought a, do you know that this is not true, Ms.?
No, I, I don't know, because just like it was done at C-KAG, when most of you were there, the vote, the, each city's voting representative types it into chat and it's put into a spreadsheet and listed down and the half, well, I guess, you know, and then counted up the votes and reported that night, and there was no further comment that night.
Well, let's call, Councilmembers, Councilmember Pappan, could you call for the question then?
Did I see one other Councilman, Councilman Holliver, did you have your hand up?
I do, yes, thank you. I mean, frankly, I believe this should be up to the mayor in terms of the process question, whether or not to have a revote. Mayor is the one who was present at that time. And I trust the mayor's judgment in this. And frankly, I was pretty surprised to hear that a special meeting of our council was being called to discuss a city selection committee vote. And by seven-plus years on the council, we have never had a special meeting to discuss the city selection committee. And it's my understanding, we're the only city in San Mateo County that is having a special meeting to discuss, discuss this. So first and foremost, I believe it should be the mayor's call. And the mayor has voted once before and I trust the mayor's judgment, obviously.
In, in that case, and unless there's further comment, Councilman Fung, we haven't heard from you. It would be great to have a motion for the direction on this.
If I may, Ms. Madam Mayor.
Please, Councilman.
So, since we've had so much of these discussions and, and I would even categorize it as confusion on how these votes were taken. It is clearly, I was at the meeting that night. It was clearly that one of the mayors or representative was not able to put in the vote. And then there was also alleged that one of the other council member was, the vote was miscounted or miscasted, which, you know, whatever situation there has to be. Then I think, you know, for the integrity of these decisions, which is a very important decision, you know, I guess air on the caution, of the, which, what's, what's the right word? Abundant of cautions, right? Taking a revote to ensure the integrity of this voting, of this voting system is being done appropriately. I think it's a reasonable approach to take.
I'll second that.
Well, that's not a motion though, Gina.
I would, I would. So I'll make a motion that this, the City of Millbrae proposed to have a revote on the, on the agenda item to select one council member to serve on the San Mateo County Transit District on SAM Trans Board.
So I heard a motion from Councilman Fung, seconded by Councilwoman Pappan. Any further discussion?
Just one point of order?
Yes, sir.
I believe this is a non-binding vote.
Yes.
Thank you.
Why is that a non-binding vote?
If I can.
The mayors are representatives of the City Selection Committee. And there's no mechanism to prevent the mayor from casting her opinion.
Other than just the governance of, of the protocols. So just to bring that to the attention of the City Council, that under Section 6, Number 5, the adopted protocol set forth the appointments to Regional County Committee and Boards. So I would just say that, you know, we're following the protocols and if the council wants to do something different, then we should eliminate, you know, fix, fix the process and procedure so we're consistent. Either way, you know, we're good with it, but just consistency would, is warranted.
So what do we?
Call for the question.
Vice Mayor, do you need, do you need the city clerk to read what we think we have here? Would that help?
Okay, but is this time for discussion?
I can do it real quick, so.
Well, I just want to have a discussion, no, thank.
The motion is to direct the vote.
I, I think the Vice Mayor can't hear you, Tom, so let's let the Vice Mayor go and then City Manager.
I, I, I hear, I hear loud, I hear loud and clear, and I know the motion, thank you very much. I was just thinking that if, if in fact we vote against this motion, we could have another motion that the mayor takes this to the Council of Cities and does, and does her vote like we had already voted on. Is that correct, Ruben? Is that what you're thinking? Or, or is that what you're stating in your previous statement?
Well, what I was stating is that we could have this vote right now, but ultimately, the mayor is the one who attends the meeting tomorrow. You know, she, she can choose to follow this direction of the council or not.
If I can just point in there, I think that there will be discussion tomorrow on during the time of COVID, which has changed the way votes have been done. And of all the selection committees in the last year, this is the first time there has been a problem. Of course, it has to happen when a race is very close, but that the Council of Cities or Selection Committee will be looking at making sure that this doesn't happen again in the future and that there are, there are practices in place to make sure that this doesn't happen. So I talked to Su Vadorlas, the Chair of the Council of Cities over the weekend about process and how it will be improved. So I appreciate hearing from all of you. I would love to call the vote.
Please don't call for the question, we'll have to call, we'll have to vote on that.
So no, don't we, there's a motion in a second on the floor, don't we have to vote for this?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So, City Clerk, would you mind roll call vote, please?
Councilwoman Holliver?
Aye.
Wait, 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 what?
My, my vote was aye for the revote.
So Ruben, you want a revote?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, should I continue?
Yes, please.
Continue, please. There's a motion.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Leva? Vice Mayor Leva?
I think she got stuck.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye. Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Well, clearly, my direction is aye. The problem that many mayors feel is that this is going to open the door to many problems in the future. So there's, there's a lot of concern about revoting on that, so I should have pointed that out earlier.
Aye.
Thank you. So the council provided direction to the mayor regarding the appointment to SAM Trans Board of Directors on the City Selection Committee to revote by the vote of 520.
Okay, next on the agenda is whom to actually vote for. And I want to tell you what I went through in coming to a decision on this vote. Jocelyn Manalo had contacted me back in December before we knew if South San Francisco was going to reappoint Carol Matsumoto. So there wasn't even an assurance that there was a seat. And Jocelyn and I talked, I talked to her or asked her a little bit about what she knew about Millbrae. Even though she's voting, she's representing North County and Millbrae is considered part of Central County, we're right on the border. And we're frankly, a city that has not, not had as many projects approved through the SMTA as other cities. And you can go to the SMTA website and see which communities seem to be getting projects paid for and which cities are not, and we are one of the are-nots. And yet we have some big, big critical projects that have to happen in Millbrae over 101, et cetera, along, along our at-grade projects. I then spoke to Rico Medina, Count Mayor Medina and I had a long talk about the similarities between Millbrae and San Bruno and the projects that would happen that would connect both Millbrae and San Bruno and long-term safety, health, bike pedestrian issues. And that is why I voted for Rico Medina, because I think it's a choice for the city of Millbrae. Councilwoman Pappan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I talked to Mayor Manalo early on and gave my commitment. I stand by my word when I give my commitment here. I do believe she's highly qualified for this position, having been on the Advisory Board for SAM Trans for, I understand, several years. I believe communication is key with all of our representatives here. I believe that Mayor Medina has been a spectacular representative for us on the TA. And I don't, I really don't want to see us lose him there. He has said that he would give up one for the other. And that's going to be quite a loss for us as well here. I think a lot of our representation is very key to informing our elected representatives what our needs and wants are. And I think that this position is going to be, again, related to the SAM Trans Board. Mayor Manalo has a lot of experience there. And in moving forward, I think she would be a strong representative for whatever Millbrae needs or whatever any of the other cities need along those lines. As similarly, I believe the mayor of San Bruno, Rico Medina, has done for us on the TA. So I would move to vote for Mayor Jocelyn Manalo.
Well, I would prefer that you hold on moving until we hear from the other council members, since this is asking for direction. So I don't, is there another, another hand raised? Vice Mayor Leva, comments?
Sure. So, I, I hear what Councilmember, Councilmember Pappan is saying, and I, I concur with how our, the mayor of San Bruno has been a good representative to our TA. And I, I question why he would want to leave. That, that's the first thing that comes to mind. But I'm not so sure that we will get the ear that we need to have by going to Daly City's mayor or council member, sorry, excuse me. I have not made a commitment to either. And I would tell you that my loyalties are in San Bruno. I, I like the fact that we could have an ear and I was happy that our mayor did cast the vote to Mayor Medina. I'm sad, I'm saddened that it comes down to this, because that's your job. Go do it. And you've already heard from all of us how we felt about this. I guess my, the, the biggest question is, is that neither, either of the candidates knew anything about what our major concern was with High Speed Railroad. And that's something that is huge, that we need to, we need to really be thinking about. So with casting a vote, I hope that you'll be able to cast a vote to somebody that you can explain where, where we need to be with where we, where TOD is. I'm not happy with the way that we've been treated with the board at SAM, at SAM Trans, as, as, as we all know. We have been dismissed over issues that need to be addressed. And whoever gets into this position, I hope is going to be able to advocate for what we in Millbrae need.
Vice Mayor, thank you for those comments. And I want to say I agree with you completely. And when I spoke with, in fact, have had several conversations with Mayor Medina about the issues, High Speed Rail being first and foremost, and exactly how High Speed Rail will travel through San Bruno and Millbrae, but its huge impacts on Millbrae, as well as the Caltrain situation and as well as the BART situation, as much as I could, given that we're in negotiations. So we can't speak a lot about those. I will also say that I received a phone call from our supervisor, Supervisor Pine, both talking about homeless situations, but also talking about, and, and I've actually told Mayor Medina this, he doesn't always talk about everything that he does. And when you sit down with him one-on-one, you hear much more about what he does. And frankly, with my position on BPAC, San Bruno has always been there, supporting us in BPAC, when the other communities have not. And Mayor Medina and I had a pretty detailed conversation, I thought, on High Speed Rail. It's been such a busy month, to make him understand how absolutely devastating it is. In addition to that, San Bruno and Millbrae, and to a degree, South San Francisco, Grand Boulevard never really quite hit us. All the work that was done in other cities, they dropped, they got rid of the Grand Boulevard Initiative, at least in terms of public elected official participation. But we have so much work in partnership with San Bruno if we want to reclaim El Camino from being a freeway, a third freeway running down our heart. So I, I hear you completely. I feel really confident that Mayor Medina, and, and in fact, we have been working on setting up mayor meetings with the City Manager between us and South San Francisco, so that we can start working on partnership programs together. Because we have been left out of much of the SMTA work, as well as shuttle buses, the whole range of transportation issues. So I thank you and I'm, I'm completely with you and I'm confident, Vice Mayor. Oh, Councilman Holliver?
Thank you. You know, I, I haven't spoken with either candidate about this position. I've been contacted by both, but I haven't spoken to either one. I do know them both fairly well and respect them both. And I think they would both do a fine job on the SAM Trans Board. However, I think right now, the stakes are different than they would normally be between the pandemic, with ridership down significantly and with the issues with Caltrain governance, SAM Trans being the managing partner of Caltrain at this time, but there's going to be some tough discussions coming up in, in the next year or so about that. So I think because of, you know, the gravity of the issues that are facing SAM Trans right now, I believe Mayor Medina has the stronger experience between his time on the TA. I've also served with him on the commute.org board. And I think he brings a great deal of experience that will be useful for SAM Trans. Also, San Bruno is one of the only other cities besides Millbrae, and I guess South San Francisco, that have both BART and a Caltrain station. So I think that's an important perspective to have, especially as, you know, we talk about seamless transportation principles. Having, you know, the knowledge of the importance of connecting SAM Trans with BART and with Caltrain, I think is tremendously important for this board. And I hope with Mayor Medina's perspective, you know, and shuttles as well, the shuttles going up to Bay Point, sorry, Bay Hill and back down to the station. So I think having that perspective will help quite significantly for the SAM Trans Board and really hope to see him on that committee. But again, as I said before, I think first and foremost, I support the mayor making a decision on behalf of the council. And I don't think we need to be here tonight to discuss this, but thank you.
Much appreciated. And again, that is actually what Supervisor Pine told me, that with the negotiations that have to happen between Santa Clara County and San Francisco County, that having Mayor Medina be able to step right into that is pretty important in that role in this particular time on that end. So that, Councilman Fung, and then Councilwoman Pappan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have had discussion with both Mayor Medina as well as Mayor Manalo. You know, my conversation with the Daly City Mayor was much earlier, right? And, you know, she came from a pretty big jurisdiction. Daly City has got a lot of population and they've been served by SAM Trans quite a bit. So, you know, they have a vested interest to make sure that, you know, they have a specia at the table. And, you know, we also have discussed extensively in terms of what the city of Millbrae needs and how to be a regional partner. And the same conversation I have had with Mayor Medina as well. And I think both mayor will do really well, serving on that one way or another. You know, given the fact that Mayor Medina has already been, has a seat on the TA, I just thought that it would be, it'd make more sense to have a little bit more diversity and give everybody an opportunity at the table. And given how Daly City is, has not been able to have a representation on this transportation board. So I thought my vote would have gone to Mayor Manalo. So I would second the motion that Councilman Pappan.
There's no, no motion yet, no motion. Councilwoman, thank you, Mr. Fung, Councilwoman Pappan?
Actually, there was a motion, but for the point, at this point in time, is that there have been a lot of cursory issues brought in here right now. And I can't say that anyone currently on the SAM Trans Board has spoken up for Millbrae with regard to our issues. So as far as a fresh voice, I do think that that's important. I do greatly respect Mayor Medina. And I respect giving one's word to vote one way. And that's, that's where I stand at this point in time. If somebody changes their mind on a vote, it's respectful to notify that person and not just change the mind here. The, by, Mayor, our former Mayor Holliver keeps bringing up the fact this is the mayor's choice. We have an established protocol, so we're going to take a vote tonight. And I suspect that this will go more than one round. It sounds like it'll go 10-10 and then there'll be another vote out there. So we have in the past discussed this, when things like that happen. So I think it's important for a fresh perspective. It looks like there, you know, the vote's going to be split here tonight. But Millbrae and the respect that we get depends on how we present ourselves. But Millbrae and the respect that we get depends on how we present ourselves at these council, council cities votes. So I respect everybody's opinion here. I do think we're going to be back here again, because should Mayor Medina get this, then there's going to be an open seat on the TA, which a lot of people are going to be striving for here. Having served on MTC, I wish we had more support from the other cities, and it's up to our city council to bring everyone together here throughout the county. All 20 cities, and that's educating everyone as to each and every city's needs and wants. So I wanted to be clear on that front. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. You know, when we discussed, and I can't remember how many, how many phone calls I got on the appointment of Jeff G. to the, the board, the strongest issue that stood in Jeff G.'s favor is just how well he understands the situation between the counties. And I had a, I had a really fabulous discussion with him, and how well, so I felt very comfortable voting, voting for Jeff G. because he understood Millbrae's issues, but he also understood all of the political dynamics between the counties. And again, that's why I'm in favor of Rico Medina. So it does sound to me like there, there's at least a two-two. So at this point, Gina, you had a motion. What is your motion?
Um.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, we seem like we have a few other people here on the call. We've got Mayor Medina.
Oh, I'm sorry, City Manager.
Mr. Berudo and Mr. Chan. Do we have a, you know, a section where we can take public comments?
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Fung. City Manager, open it for a public comment.
That, that is at the discretion of the city council.
Okay, city council, can we do a, do I have to do a vote on this, or can I do a straw vote? Everybody does thumbs up? I'm on a state board, we do thumbs up if we want to hear from the public.
I think we have consensus.
I think we always want to hear from, we always want to hear from the public.
Very good.
Yeah. We should hear from them.
Yeah.
If there are members of the public who would like to speak, if you've got the ability to raise your hand in the, the participant box, please do so. And the city clerk will unmute you.
Yeah. And also, Mayor, we do have the public communication section on our agenda as well.
I, I'm looking at talking heads and not at the agenda. My bad, I usually have the printed agenda.
Okay. All right. So Nathan Chan is our first speaker. I will unmute you.
Uh, well, thank, thank you for the invitation to speak before you. I do think that both Jocelyn Manalo and Rico Medina are, are good candidates for this role. I'm not sure how Mayor Manalo feels about bus rapid transit on El Camino. But I have heard from other transit advocates that Mayor Medina is a, an advocate for that. I think that would be a game changer in terms of transit, transit access and usability in our county. And it's something that SAM Trans undoubtedly has control over. So at least on that issue, I just wanted to point out that Mayor Medina has indicated support for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Anyone else? We didn't mean to put Mr. Berudo or Mr. Medina on the spot. I'm looking at who's here from the public, and those look like the two other public members. If nothing else, no further hands?
Mr. Medina is not going to speak?
You know, there's always that thing that council members don't speak at other council members' meetings. So.
That would be a first.
Let me, I'm trying to raise my hand.
There you go.
Is that Mayor Medina? You are welcome here, Mayor Medina.
I, I know that. I, I've lived here my whole life, so Millbrae's always been welcoming. I personally did not plan to speak. I am here because I'm interested in serving, and that's why I'm here, listening to your meeting. But I certainly don't want to be disrespectful to your deliberation and dialogue. So my interest is still there. I've spoken to some of you. And so, yes, I would greatly appreciate the direction to the mayor to, for the city of Millbrae's vote for tomorrow at two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Elaine, do we have any, any comments in writing? Any email? I didn't get any.
I, at this time, the city did not receive any. We do have one attendee just arrived.
Who just arrived? I'm sorry.
We just accepted someone in the public, through the meeting.
Okay, so for that new person, I'm just saying that we have, we are in the end of public comments for the one item on the agenda, which is the city of Millbrae's vote for the SAM Trans, the SMTA board position. If you would like to speak, I think if you're on phone, you cannot raise your hand. How do we do that?
Yes, they can. It's star nine.
So I see unknown attendee has raised their hand.
All right, you are unmuted. If you could state your name, please? Are they still on mute? I asked to unmute already. Oh, there. Hello, unknown attendee. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Hi, good, good, good evening. My name is Jocelyn Manalo with the city of Daly City. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for make, having me speak. Is it possible to have the floor at the moment?
Oh, please, please go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Good evening, council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to all of you this evening. You know, I hope you received my letters of interest. I would love to serve on the SAM Trans a North County seat and really have the experience sitting on the SAM Trans seat for about three to four years, and served as the vice chair and also the chairwoman. So I also have my master's in public administration, in which I will be utilizing that to be able to assess many of the budgetary needs and also operational necessities as we look at SAM Trans. And I know that there are many similar needs that we have with having a BART station and more access to bus lines is extremely important to your communities. And what I will tell to you to each and, each and every one of you council members that I'm a person that will make myself accessible to each and every one of you, a phone call or a text away, to be able to represent the communities that we all serve, and most especially, understand the needs of Millbrae. So I can be also a voice on that board for all of you.
Thank you, Mayor Manalo. All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Um, I see Ruben Holliver's, I'd like to close public comment, or was that what you were going to do? Councilman Holliver?
No, go ahead.
I don't see any, no, I see no further hands, so closing public comment, period. Councilman Holliver, please go ahead.
Thank you. You know, one comment that was made earlier is that we don't want to lose Mayor Medina on the TA board. It's my understanding, actually, that he was already seated on the SAM Trans Board and has, is now the SAM Trans appointee to the TA. So, you know, if you'd like to keep Mr. Medina on the TA, we can, my understanding is we can do that by, if, if he is appointed to SAM Trans Board. So thank you.
Thank you. I, I was not aware of that. Thank you, Councilman. All right, with that, Gina had put a motion up. I know we were trying to wait for conversation to finish before a motion, but Councilwoman Pappen, would you like to make a motion?
Um, as I said before, both candidates are great, but I did give my word, so I have to make a motion here, but that's very interesting information. Thank you, Mr. Holliver. So hopefully, we will not have a vacancy there as far as representation. Did not know that. Um, yeah, my motion was for Mayor Manalo, but it doesn't look like I have the votes. So I guess somebody can do another motion if they wish.
Okay, I, again, still somewhat new, so we can, if the, the second, if Councilman Fung agrees, we can pull this motion and make a new motion. Help me with protocol.
Well, Mayor, if I may, if there's no motion, then there's no motion, and, and then we go to...
I'll make a motion to ask the mayor to please vote for Mayor Medina from San Bruno to the SAM Trans Board.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Mr. Holliver?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I just, I just want to make sure that, Mayor, you make, when you do cast the vote and you get the opportunity, so he wins, I hope, that you make it very clear that we have crucial, critical issues in Millbrae that need to be addressed. And yes, we are friends and we take care of each other. So I want to make sure that that is locked in stone.
I, I am very happy to do that. In fact, I would love to put the city manager on the spot. We need an environment where the five of us can sit down and list all of the things that we need that are transportation-related, and how many of them overlap with each other. So my work on airport noise opens up the noise door for so many other areas. I would love for us to sit down and we get the Millbrae transportation needs, and we send them out to all of the transportation agencies. I think it's, I, I, I'm happy to do that for you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and I want to make it perfectly clear, Gina, I think that Councilmember Pappen, I think that your initial commitment to the mayor of Daly City was a good commitment, not unknowingly, knowing the facts and how everything would unravel. And we can't lose in this situation. We have, hopefully, the support of both Daly City and San Bruno.
Agreed.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? Councilman Fung?
Yes, I did have a relatively extensive conversation with Mayor Medina with regard to the critical needs of Millbrae. And I made, you know, abundantly clear that, you know, it is a top priority for our city. And, you know, and I think Mr. Mayor Medina clearly understands our perspective on what's important here, and how, you know, the, the regional partnership is going to be an extremely important element, right, in, in his quest in this appointment, and how, you know, he intends to work with us as a jurisdiction to make sure that, you know, both BART stations and, and how SAM Trans interconnected would be a winning strategy for both cities, so.
Thank you, Councilman. I think it's exciting that all five of us are on the same page. And I, I, I think look, look out the rest of the county and San Francisco when we get all of our demands, if I can put it that strongly, in one place, and we start work, moving forward on that. With that, I'd like to call the question.
Somebody?
Please call the vote.
I, no, somebody has to second my vote, my nominee.
Oh, Ruben did.
My motion.
I'm sorry. Vice Mayor, Councilman Holliver did. We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Holliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen? I have to, sorry. Sorry, Rico. Love you. Say no. Uh, Councilmember, sorry, Vice Mayor Aliva?
I'm going to say, not our demands, but our entitlements. Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The council provided direction to the mayor to vote for Mayor Rico Medina to the SAM Trans Board of Directors at the City Selection Committee by the vote of four to one, with Councilmember Pappen dissented.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor Medina and Mayor Manalo for joining us tonight, and Mr. Berudo, who is district director for Supervisor Pine, for the audience there. I'm probably jumping ahead, there are already three, who knows what will happen tomorrow? We'll see what happens tomorrow. Council of Cities will improve its process, selection committee. But there, there is likely to be an opening on the TA. And I encourage whomever wins or doesn't tomorrow to consider that position there. I have also heard that Mark Nagalas is interested, and Cliff Lenz is interested in that. But that's who I've heard of so far, and whose mayors have called me for their support. But I have made no opinions. With that, I believe we are done. We don't have to do any other business?
Mayor, I, I don't know if you called for public communication, just in case if there's anybody who...
Oh, an item not on the agenda?
Yep.
Um, thank you, city clerk. Formally asking if there's anyone here who has a comment for an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing anybody, I'm not seeing anybody wave me, so I will close that part of the meeting. And with that, I would like to end the meeting at 6:48 PM.
Good night.
Good night.
Night, thank you.
Thank you all.